The Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting will convene, it's May 7th, 2024. Pastor Bob Osward, could you come up and lead us in the indication? Hopefully, I didn't butcher the.
Dear God, we thank you this morning for this lovely place that you've allowed us and privileged us to be able to live and work and play. We just thank you for the importance of the meeting and the events of today in this room, and thank you for each one who is in leadership and each one who has come to participate. And we just thank you again for this lovely place that you've given us. And certainly, as we have seen our area thrive in the midst of storms and turmoil, and even, we don't know what the future holds, but we know who holds the future, and we're thankful that we have something more important than any one of us or any one of our agendas. We have a God who is all wise and all powerful. And so, we invoke your blessings this morning as you see us seek to not only do the will of the people of this free state and this wonderful county, but also that your blessings would be upon each one today. And we love you, and we just thank you so much for the opportunity that we have to be in a free place like we enjoy. Help us to not take it for granted, and help us to do our part to be good citizens and to be good leaders and to be good people for you. And I'm thankful also that we have the opportunity and the privilege and the blessing to pray and ask this in the lovely name of Jesus. Amen.
Put their flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, for my nation under God, indivisible, with every team of justice and law.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, sir. We'll go into ceremonial presentations. First one's Pet of the Month. Commissioner Pendigrade.
Thank you, Chairman. I could have Karen, and we have our prom queen here today to celebrate. And this is Trina, and she's our prom queen today, and she is looking for a home, and she is one happy little girl. And I thought Karen could give us an update real quick. I know we got some great programs coming out. It's costume week or character week this week?
It's spirit week this week. So today's character day, but Trina decided to show off her outfit because she's competing for prom queen, because Friday is prom. So anybody that comes in dressed in the theme of the day gets their adoption fee waived with an approved application. And then Saturday, we have our Foster Fest for our rescues and shelters. So if anybody's looking to foster for anybody, including animal services, we're going to be in all one place on Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. You can sign right up with any of the rescues or our facility.
There you are.
But I think she's a pretty good, she's in the running for prom queen. So I mean, I think she's got half the room's vote at this point.
Well, you could tell in the pictures, she was very happy in my office. She did not want to leave, and we had a good time in there this morning. So thank you for bringing her down. Any, got a full house right now? We got plenty of adoptions available?
Two days ago, we had 95 dogs in-house. We have quite a few, obviously, up for adoption. We always do. It's a revolving door. You know, we get, we're not adopted, another one comes right in. But, you know, we do our best to get them adopted with these cute promotions that people see and.
People here today and people home listening, hopefully they can adopt and take a pet home this week and add to your family. So again, thank you for everything and all your staff, what you do for animal services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next presentation will be by Commissioner Sandelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we have some of the folks here for this resolution on National Bike Month, please, you can come forward. I'll read the resolution. We'll take a picture and then ask you to speak after that. As a avid bike rider, it's my pleasure to read this. Whereas National Bike Month has been celebrated since 1956 and was established to showcase the many benefits of cycling, and whereas Florida is ideally situated for residents and visitors to cycle with an average of 237 sunny days per year, along with many scenic locations available for walkers. And whereas Lee County has invested substantial funds in the development of bicycle facilities and currently maintains approximately 1,113 miles of on and off-road paths, lanes, and trails. And whereas bicycles from all over the globe visit Lee County to enjoy the extensive cycling facilities, thus having a positive impact on Lee County's economic and tourism industry. And whereas national health organizations and physical fitness activists promote increased bicycling in a way to improve health, quality of life, and boost community spirit. And whereas an increase in use of bicycles in place of motor vehicles has a positive environmental impact on decreasing greenhouse gas emissions and reducing pollution in Lee County. And whereas Lee County encourages bicycle safety, education for bicyclists and motorists, including the rules of the road and benefits of wearing helmets to ensure safety and well-being of all. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners adopted a complete streets resolution on November 10th, 2009, to integrate bicycling, walking, and public transit with the county's transportation program. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, does hereby declare May 24th to be Bike Month in Lee County and encourages residents and visitors to participate in the following events throughout the month. Bike to School Day, Wednesday, May 8th. Bike to Work Week, Monday through Sunday, May 13th to 19th. And Bike to Work Day, Friday, May 17th. Duly executed this 7th day of May 2024, the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, signed by our Chairman, Mike Greenwell.
I think there's some members here. I think.
Yeah, I've got a list of a few folks. If you'd like to come forward, please.
How's overtime?
Good morning. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Oh, will you hand him the resolution?
Thank you. And the podium's yours. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. Don't draft me too close on the road. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for this proclamation and resolution. We very much appreciate that. Getting the public to know what we're trying to do out here, trying to get more and more bicycle facilities around and better for the safety. As we know, this is a pretty dangerous area to ride a bicycle, and Lee County has spent, as I was just talking to the director, millions and millions of dollars, we really have, allocated for bicycle facilities for us, for not just, not just the spandex crowd, so to speak, but mainly everybody else that wants to ride a bicycle. It's good for health. It's good for all of us. I think I'd be remiss to not mention, though, that we're your Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We're simply an advisory committee for the Commissioners appointed by you. I think it's, would be remiss, again, if I don't mention that without county staff, without DOT and community development, and all these different people that help us get this done, all we do is make recommendations. These guys are stars. I'm telling you, the stuff they get done for us, everything from, if you find a pothole somewhere you can put in an RFA, you know, a request for action, this stuff happens, getting a street sweep, happens just about like that. So I think, yes, it's important for, to know about the facilities, but it's more important to realize it wouldn't happen without county staff. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you. Stay safe. I have the pleasure of doing the next resolution. It's Dr. Maria Alfaro here. And anyone in your group who's taking, come on up. That'd be great. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Resolution reads as follows. Whereas May is National Trauma Awareness Month, which was established by Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to raise attention to the devastating impact traumatic injuries on individuals, families, and communities. And whereas trauma is the leading cause of death for all Floridians between ages of 1 and 44, with someone in Florida being traumatically injured every 12 minutes, which is enough to fill the Hertz Arena six times. And whereas motor vehicle crashes and falls resulting in blunt foot trauma make up more than 75% of all trauma cases treated in trauma service districts each year. And whereas in 2022, more than 3,777 Southwest Floridian residents and visitors were cared in Lee County Trauma Service Division, and national studies show that trauma mortality is reduced by 15 to 20% when a severely injured patient is treated for injuries in the trauma center. And whereas over 1.4 million reside in Lee County trauma districts, which is comprised of Charlotte, Colliott, Glades, Henry, and Lee Counties, which is the only trauma center in Florida Gulf Coast between Sarasota and Miami. Whereas the last 29 years, the Lee County Trauma Service District has provided optimal care in injured persons in five regions from 2000 to 2022, treating 55,217 patients. And whereas today, we recognize Lee County Trauma Services District's commitment to providing sustainable access to quality trauma care to improve the quality of life, protect the public welfare through its acute care services, injury prevention, education for all residents and visitors to the five county regions. And whereas we recognize that all dedicated first responders and medical professionals who serve the injured patients in our community. Now, therefore, it be resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, designates May 2024 as Trauma Awareness Month, and encourages all residents and visitors to mindful think first, encourage participation in injury prevention education to improve the health and safety of our community. Duly executed, May 7th, by their Chairman, Mike Greenwell.
Congratulations.
All right. One, two, and three.
Thank you. Someone to say a few words? That'd be great.
The Lee Health Trauma Center appreciates the county commissioners and the community for acknowledging May as Trauma Awareness Month and providing continued support to our organization. We also thank our coalition partners, including FIRE, EMS, and Law Enforcement, for their contributions. This year marks the 30th anniversary of our Lee, of our Lee Health Level 2 Trauma Center, the only in five-county area. This is a significant milestone for our organization. Over the years, we have witnessed a steady increase in the patients we serve. For instance, in 2014, the Trauma Center treated approximately 2,157 patients. By the end of 2023, the figure had risen to 4,526, and we expected to surpass 5,000 patients in this upcoming year. Furthermore, our data shows that falls are the primary cause of trauma alerts followed by motor vehicle collisions. Our organization remains committed to providing our patients with safe, effective, and comprehensive trauma care. Again, we sincerely thank you for, thank you for your support, and thank our partners and everybody with their unwavering assistance. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And our last resolution is by Commissioner Hammond.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. I would like to recognize our clerk of court, Kevin Carnes, and I'd also like to ask that anyone who's here with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, or North Fort Myers High School, please join us by the podium. I have a special resolution to read into the record. I'll give you all a moment to come on up. Welcome, welcome. Looks like we got some basketball players here, for sure, right? By the way, I'm a proud father of an incoming red knight, so pretty excited about this. Yeah. All right. Well, good morning. We have a resolution this morning recognizing Big Brothers, Big Sisters Beyond School Walls program. I will read the resolution into the record, and it goes as follows. Whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters is a nationally-recognized nonprofit organization dedicated to providing mentoring programs for children and youth in Lee County. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters has a longstanding history of positively impacting the lives of young people by matching them with caring adult mentors who provide guidance, support, and friendship. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters has been instrumental in helping children and youth achieve academic success, develop positive relationships, and build essential life skills. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters has developed the Beyond School Walls program to provide high school students workforce mentoring with local employers. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters and Lee County's Clerk of Courts and Comptroller have partnered in the Beyond School Walls program to enrich the lives of North Fort Myers High School students and educate them about local government operations and careers in public service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida recognizes and commends Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Lee County Clerk of the Court and Comptroller for making significant and lasting impacts on the lives of North Fort Myers High School students, contributing to a stronger community and a better Lee County. And we proclaim May 7th, 2024, as Big Brothers, Big Sisters Beyond School Walls Day in Lee County. This was signed this 7th day of May 2024 by our Honorable Chairman, Mike Greenwell. Congratulations, y'all. Sophomores? That's awesome. Well, cool. She's got a couple more years. Good deal. And would somebody say a few words, please?
No problem.
Good job, Ken. Yeah, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You're taking this? Okay.
Thank you so much for having us here today. On behalf of Big Brothers, Big Sisters with Beyond School Walls at North Fort Myers High School, I can, I can truly say that this program has changed all of our lives. I have, through this program, I have become much more confident in who I am as a person and what I want to do in the future. And without this program, I wouldn't have realized that I am a capable person and that I can do these things. I wouldn't have realized it without this program, and I am so grateful for them. On behalf of the rest of, you know, my program, or the littles and the bigs, we are very grateful for this. And again, thank you so much for honoring this day as Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Beyond School Walls, North Fort Myers High School Day, or all the words that I can't get out. And on behalf of the Red Knight Nation, once a red knight, always a red knight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you. That concludes our ceremonial presentations. Next, we'll deal with the recap. There's just a change, the C22, a couple of commission items, nothing left to deal with. We'll go to consent agenda. Commissioner Hammond, would you like to pull?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion to make the revision and correction that's been called for on item C22.
Second. I have a second. Public comment. See, no, not closed. Public comment. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I have no items to pull. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pendigrade.
No items to pull.
Commissioner Sandelli. I don't have any items either. Do you want to make a motion?
I'd move, make a motion, move the ballot.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, a second on the floor. Do you have a couple of public comments? First one's Cole Peacock, and the second one is Marsha Ellis.
Good morning. Cole Peacock here. Just real quick, want to thank you for the work you're doing with the, TOWI ordinance is coming up, item number 10, all the work that went into, not only with meetings in your offices, but with staff and everything that came together. It has not been changed in about 10-plus years, so it was time to do that. Again, thanks for bringing it up to date, and I'm representing Guardian Toding, who is a client of y'alls. They would be very happy to see that they're getting into modern-day payments and scheduling. So thank you all very much for what you did. We appreciate it.
Next, Marsha Ellis, 17344319.
Thank you. Marsha Ellis, for the record, thank you for the chance to bring forward some concerns on these items. I'm going to start with number seven, which is HB 1739, followed by item number 13, purchase for the Alico Connector, item 34, deep well injection at the Lee Hendry landfill, and item 43, which is hydrogen sulfide control at the wastewater plants countywide. So first of all, returning back to item number seven, I would like to request that for comparison purposes, that strikes through edits, deletions, additions, for any ordinance changes be brought forward in the item numbers, as well as analysis, that there not be NA written down with analysis of the implications of this as brought forward to the LPA, noting that the local planning agency is basically chock-full of development interest. It's very important that the, that the written record show that good faith effort is being made to provide with transparency that information for the public to evaluate. Also, to prioritize advanced wastewater treatment. I would like to note that, that all of the facilities, current exist, facilities in Lee County are up to that advanced wastewater treatment, because there is an outstanding question regarding that in Lehigh Acres. I've been unable to successfully get answered. Now, for the Alico Connector. I have given public comment and written comment extensively regarding my concerns that we get a separate turn lane for divorce so that our kids can get on and off the bus, we can get into our neighborhood, that we minimize stormwater ponds so that people don't crash into those ponds, that we eliminate those lights and have dark skies for the conservation uses that are in place in that area. I'm just restating those concerns with this purchase of this land. Now, I want to turn to item number seven, which is the hydrogeological consulting for the deep water injection. I have a lot of concerns here for the waste stream that is being deep injected, coming from the ash, the monofil ash, the leachate from the landfills across the county, noting that currently 30 million gallons are being injected. I am really concerned about the quality is at the drinking water standards as it should be. And I note that the, it states on subtask 2.3 at the associated item, that the analysis shall include an evaluation that the waste stream is nonhazardous excluding disinfection byproducts. So we want to make sure that water that is being deep well-injected is up to those standards, and preemptively, I'll object to anything being injected into those zones that don't meet those standards. And then last, hydrogen sulfide control. I'm going to point out that when we take on these huge sanitary sewage plants, right, we've got these overflows, we also have the hydrogen sulfide, which gathers. That is something that we need to acknowledge as a liability with these projects. Thank you.
Any other public comments on the consent agenda? See, no, not closed. Public comment. Bring it back up to the commission. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Anyone object? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. County Manager, you can lead us to administrative item number one.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. The first item is to approve an ILA in our local agreement with the town of Fort Myers Beach for beach re-nourishment and restoration. I'd like to ask Mr. Steve Butell to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. And as anticipated, this agreement will help to implement the next round of beach nourishment work on Astero Island. The work is anticipated to be done this summer under a contract administered by the town of Fort Myers Beach and has two distinct segments. Our role will be primarily financial in this particular event, and the budget amendment that's included as part of this item will bring the total budget up to 9.2 million referenced in the agreement. All of that funding is coming from the beach and shoreline portion of the tourist development tax. We anticipate the benefits on this project that are well-known to this commission, and the funding is in alignment with the previous policy to allocate those funds as directed by this board. The town has previously approved this agreement and also approved the construction contract yesterday, in part contingent upon this approval here this morning. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. Could you talk a little bit about what the construction timeline is going to look like and what the process will look like? Obviously, the beach is well-used and well-loved, and so how will beachgoers, you know, work around this construction?
Yeah, generally, I think I can address that. Obviously, not our contract, but what I know from the town of Fort Myers Beach, and they have a representative here who will jump up and tell me if I misspoke, is that they'll have a defined work area, which is generally between 500 and 1,000 feet. Only that portion of the beach will be closed at any one time, and that's for safety considerations. And then that work zone will move down the island. As the pipeline remains, they will put sand ramps over it every couple hundred feet so that people can easily get over that, and that's not an impediment. Overall, the timeline, I think they're anticipating something around June to November for this summer's operation. It is a very large project, so it'll take some time to complete, but again, only a small portion impacted at any one time.
Thanks. That answers my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Thanks, Steve. Appreciate your presentation. I do have a public comment. Chad Coats.
Hey, morning, everyone. Chad Chutes, Environmental Staff for the town of Fort Myers Beach. I don't want to reiterate too much what Mr. Steve went through, but I do want to thank all of you for your support. Thank Mr. Steve Butell, Mike Campbell, Nancy McPhee, and all the staff at the TDC for all your support, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other public comments on administrative item number one? No, not closed. Public comment. I'm going to back up to the commission. I have a motion on the floor. I have a second by Commissioner Hammond, first by Commissioner Sandelli. Any other discussion? Any objections? Motion carries nationally. Thank you. Administrative item number two.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. This is to approve the Florida Department of Transportation funding agreement for intersection improvements on Tree Line at Daniels, and I'd like to ask Mr. Rob Price to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Price with DOT. This item executes a funding agreement with that DOT in the amount of $1.35 million to construct improvements at the intersection of Daniels and Tree Line. We plan to reconfigure the lanes on the northbound approach to eliminate one of the unneeded northbound left turn lanes. There's three today. And we're going to turn that into a new through lane and then repurpose the outside through lane into a new second right turn lane northbound to head east towards Lehigh. We performed the design in-house, but FDOT has requested that we perform a structural analysis at the intersection, so we'll be bringing a task forward soon for a consultant to do the structural analysis and complete the design. And then upon completion, we'll finalize that design and get it out to bid. We expect construction to start later this year. We're here for any questions.
Any questions for Rob?
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Hey, Rob, you said construction would start later this year. Do you think it would be during the tourist season, during the height of peak season, or?
We're hoping that it'll start before the end of this, this, this current year, probably in December timeframe. We don't, the northbound left turn lane that we're going to repurpose isn't highly utilized anymore. It was built with three northbound lefts when the airport's main access was coming off of Tree Line. So we think it'll be limited impacts to the actual traveling public, and the need for that second right turn lane is very big. I mean, that queue backs up all the way halfway to the airport.
Okay. And then what are some of the things you'll do to notify drivers about what's going on in the area?
Yeah, we'll have a robust communications plan through our community engagement team just to get the word out to the media and through social media so that everyone's aware when we start construction.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Rob, it's, how long will the tour last? A few months? This will be a short project?
Yeah, it should be pretty quick. We just have to do some minor improvements on the north side to receive the change in lanes. So we expect it to be. So, we expect it to be probably three-to-four month construction.
Well, thank you for doing this. Everybody knows that if you drive that area at a certain time of the day, obviously, like Rob was saying, the northbound traffic on Tree Line will back up miles as all the traffic is going, trying to go east, and that's why until the Allico corridor is connected, we're going to have this continuous flow like that on Daniels. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Any other comments?
I move the item.
Motion of second on the floor. Any public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I have a motion of second on the floor. Any other discussion? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to approve an SDA to evaluate expansion feasibility for Corkscrew Water Treatment Plant. I'd like to ask Mr. Paul Flores to present the item.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Paul Flores, Utilities. Administrative item number three seeks approval for a supplemental task authorization to evaluate an expansion feasibility study for our Corkscrew Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $454,100. The report will assess the feasibility of expanding Corkscrew Water Treatment to, up to 20 million gallons per day. Our current permitted capacity is 15 million gallons per day. The feasibility study aims to address projected population growth in the southeast portion of the county by enhancing capacity through utilization of both existing and new ground-sourced water resources, all while meeting compliance with regulatory standards. Professional services include engineering assessments for additional treatment with reverse osmosis technology, high-service pumping capacity, finished-water quality blending analysis, associated electrical upgrades, and the final report is due about eight months after the notice to proceed is issued. Chairman, the last point I'd like to note is that Utilities is also asking the Board approval to waive section three of Lee County Procurement Ordinance 92-22 for this feasibility study. Waiving this section would allow corolla engineering the opportunity to bid on the design and construction services for the future project. The study results will be included in the procurement for all potential vendors to be able to review. All the information will be available in that procurement package. Chairman, I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions? I do have a public comment. Marsha Ellis.
Thank you. Marsha Ellis, for the record, so I'm speaking about this item because this is our public water supply, and we know that there is demand in excess of what the surficial and the intermediate aquifer can provide, and that's one of the reasons that we need to maintain the surficial and intermediate aquifers, because we're lucky. Other parts of the state are forced to use the Floridian, but when we manage our resources correctly, we can have a sustainable source of water indefinitely because it recharges with precipitation. Unfortunately, we're looking at having to go to the Lower Hawthorne more and more, even in the section of the DRGR. And when we go to the Lower Hawthorne, we have increases in the amount of chemicals that are required to treat it. I was paying attention when those standards were lowered, and the FDP is now allowing those treatment, treated, those chemicals that are used to treat, to go out into the community without the same kind of oversight and be used for things like stabilizing lakes. And we're losing control of those, and they'll come back, will come back to haunt us. Second of all, one of the reasons that this study is coming up right now is because of concern for PIFAs. And so, part of this, when you read the item carefully, states detection of emerging contaminants in the surficial aquifer supply wells at concentrations that may exceed the recently published draft regulatory limits. Going on, it says specifically, as a long-term treatment solution, removing those emerging contaminants that occur at the Corkscrew Water Treatment Plant's surficial water table and aquifer supply wells, and looking at how we're going to treat to remove those PIFAs, those PIFAs that have been picked up around town in the usual places, military installations, wastewater treatment plants, places where fire foam has been sprayed, and landfills. So, we know that PIFAs are a problem, so getting out in front of this is important, as is protecting our water supply, because once we get into the deeper levels of water, we require more treatment. One of the things that this study is calling out is switching to more acid versus the lime softening, which can interact with people's lead pipes. This is a very complex issue that absolutely demands the greatest of public transparency so that we can know, once these levels of PIFAs have been analyzed, that that can be revealed to the public. Why? Because PIFAs affect developing babies in the first trimester. This is really serious, and we need to treat it as such.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? Sorry, we just don't clap here. It's not something we do. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just make a comment. I think it's easy to get confused with, like, all the stuff that we just heard. So, I just kind of want to bring us back to what we're doing today. Today, we're being asked to approve an expansion feasibility study for the Corkscrew Water Treatment Plant. So, this is a really fast-growing area of the county. It's a part of the county that needs infrastructure. I think the most important thing that we can do is look ahead to the areas that are growing and make sure that the infrastructure is there and ready for when the homes come online, the people who will need this water. I think, obviously, this is the best way to manage our water through public utilities instead of just putting a whole bunch of wells everywhere. We're going to put everybody on public utilities, and I think certainly the fact that this is a feasibility study will include all sorts of mechanisms about how the water will be treated and things like that, but today, we're just being asked to approve a study, and I will support that motion.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. That concludes administrative items. Thank you very much. I don't have any walk-ons or carryovers. Mr. Items, Commissioner Hammond.
I have none today, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pendigraff.
Yes, I have one. I wanted to bring the board's attention. As of the, back of 2020, the board approved a contract, employment contract for their hearing examiner. It currently expires October 1st, 2024, and I was like to make a motion to have staff bring that back for, to review, to extend it to a one-year annual review for three years. Our hearing examiner finalized that contract in 2020. The time is based upon drop time, which was 60 months. Since then, the state has extended drop to 96 months. So, bring that back so we have adequate staff in our hearing examiner's office after October 1st. To this motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion, but I was looking for clarification. So, you want the staff to negotiate with one of our contract employees? Or do you want...
For the contract to come back to us, to, based upon the new dates.
Because tradition seems to be that it's one of, like, probably the chairman who would negotiate with a contract employee, what their contract extension looks like.
Right.
So, is that what your motion is?
Yes, to come back to the town, to the chairman.
Okay. Yeah, I can support that.
Is that a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion of second. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Sandelli. I do have one item. It's Rails to Trails, and there's a study that's going on right now. The study requires participants to pay $5,333. It doesn't obligate us to do anything other than participate in the study. I did receive phone calls from some of our representatives indicating that there's great federal opportunities. I don't know what those might be, but for $5,333, I think, you know, it's certainly my recommendation that we participate in the study. It doesn't obligate us to anything, doesn't oblige us to any funding, but I'd like to see the results of this. Thoughts?
Yeah, my own concern is, like I spoke about, the MPO, obviously, we don't know the total funding. I think it was $82 million for the trail without counting mitigation and the construction. So, hopefully, there's federal funding and state funding for that to facilitate that because without that funding, this project would never be, would never come together, I believe, based upon a possibly a $180 million price tag. So, I would support funding this to continue what our efforts, we already projected at the MPO, that we do support it moving forward the study process.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You know, I will say this, I applaud the, I applaud that you brought forward this idea of looking at it deeper with the study. This is something that, at the MPO recently, our partners from Bonita Springs and Astero both supported, in fact, the whole MPO supported this as well. So, I do want to say, though, like Commissioner Pendigraff said, I do share concerns about the funding of this right now when you look at all the priorities that Lee County has, but if this study can help us identify more funding opportunities that are outside of our local dollars, then I think that's an opportunity we should avail ourselves of. So, yeah, I have no problem with what you brought forward, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. As I was proud to read the bike resolution today, I'm an added rider for something like this, so there were a lot of questions that I had initially as we stepped through this with the team. You know, one is the approval of the pathway itself, which I think still has to be resolved. But number two, there's a capital expense, and then there's a maintenance expense, and it's going to take time, and I think the study will do that. But I think this is the first step, and I think if we approach it, you know, collectively, it'll help move it along, so I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, thank you all, I appreciate it. The reason, honestly, to bring this forward was to, obviously, get as much information as we possibly can so we can make an informed decision. As far as I'm concerned, the price tag is significant. I'm not obligating us or looking to obligate us to anything other than look at the study, look at the opportunities in front of us, look at the total cost, look at the maintenance, and then make our decisions. So, that was the reason for bringing it forward.
You need that as a motion, Mr. Chairman? So, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion of second. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any other discussion? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate your help in that regard. We'll now move on to county manager items. I'm sorry, commissioner appointments. My bad. Commissioner Hammond.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
I have none.
I do have one. I'm going to need a motion and a second to the historical preservation board, Kathleen Regina Walsh.
So, move.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, any other discussion up at the highest? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. County manager items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no items today.
County attorney items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing further for the board's consideration.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to public participation by citizens. I have a stack of cards, the way they were given to me, I'll read them out. April Hoover. April, are you here?
I'm going to yield my time. Deborah DeVal. My first time doing this, Deborah DeVal. And we have a resolution from the Lee County Republican Assembly, and it's, there's a lot of emotions and tension about non-citizens getting on our voter rolls. We're, people are very concerned of that, and you have the ability to take care of that for everyone and calm everybody down. All we want is done is for our voter rolls to have a scrub against who are actually U.S. citizens, and a good example of that is the jurist list that is held by the clerk of court. It's called the Juror System, and that is a really good source that can be scrubbed on a periodic basis to identify anybody that needs to be mailed out the 30-day notice. The reason is, we all know what's going on with the border, and our government agencies, the human services department, our government, federal government agencies, when they apply for assistance, they're sending them voter registrations and not telling them that it's illegal. And so, they're not doing it intentionally. They probably don't know any better, and so we just have a chance of them getting on our voter rolls. And it's a big deal because there's so many, and just, we just pray that you would take action and make sure our voter rolls are clean for upcoming elections. Be proactive about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is McPeters.
I've lived here 12 years, and this is only the fifth time I've been in front of you We have dead people on our voter rolls. We have people who don't exist on our voter rolls. We have people who no longer live here on our voter rolls. We have legal aliens with driver's license, licenses on our voter rolls. We have illegal aliens with driver's licenses on our voter rolls. We have illegal aliens in our jail. We have motor voter in our DMV ID, issuing IDs and driver's licenses to people who are not here legally. We have very easy voter registration and even easier voting. Does anyone in this room, not just me, disbelieve any of this? I question what the acceptable amount of fraud that we, in this county or any county, should be responsible for considering and accepting is fine. We just had a judge in Tallahassee rule that illegal aliens can work for third-party voter registration organizations and to not allow them to be employed as illegal aliens for third-party voter registrations is somehow discriminatory. We can't depend on Washington, D.C., or even Tallahassee. We need to lead in cleaning up our voter rolls, and it shouldn't need to be done by private citizen voters who can now be prosecuted for, if their information is considered to be harassing to the supervisor of elections or his staff. And it's currently a misdemeanor. There are SOEs across the state advocating for that to be a felony. Thank you.
Next is Robert Valenta.
I don't have enough time to read in the resolution that we passed, but it was emailed to all five commissioners, and I believe it was emailed to all of the constitutional What we're calling, but I will say that anyone, including the public, who's interested to see what the resolution says, can find it at leerepublican.com, and under the political issues, go to the election integrity page, and it's posted on there. So, you can read it in its entirety, you could download it. We're calling for cooperation between the SOE, the clerk of courts, the sheriff, and the DMV to clean up voter records. It shouldn't be this far-fetched to expect this to be done without having to push for it. So, let's, let's start, let's get together and get this done. I can tell you that as the president of the Lee County Republican Assembly, I'm dealing with other county assemblies, the state assembly, and the National Federated Republican Assembly to push this program nationwide. Let's let Lee County be the shining example of how we're going to clean up any potential illegal voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Pearson.
She's not here, so...
Robert Walter.
I'm speaking to supply you with some information on that resolution.
Can you give me your name?
I obtained from the clerk of the county courts, a list of people who, that were excused from jury duty for the past two years.
Could you give your name for the record, sir? Could you state your name for the record?
I'm out of order.
Just say your name.
What's your name?
Jerry Mercola from Astero.
Sorry.
Continue, Chair.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I have a list here that was given to me by the clerk from the courts, the court clerk, and it's a list of the people who were excused by claiming they were non-citizens, and it's accumulated since April of '22. And I guess I meant it to the lady here. And it shows that roughly 61% of them have also registered on the vote, they're on the voter roll. So, you know, the co, they do need cooperation between the county clerk of the courts and the supervisor... of elections, and especially the DMV people, because they have all the citizenship requirements. Last year, we had 145,000 extra votes than we had voters that voted in Florida. So there is a lot of room for cleanup. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person. Okay, if you can not clap best to every person, I really appreciate it. Trying to move along. Robert Walker? Walter? Robert Walker. Theodore Reese.
Good morning. My name is Theodore Reese. I live in Lee County and have been a resident of Florida for 32 years. I'm a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans, not a spokesperson. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers for over 20 states. Public distrust in elections is at an all-time high and growing. Today, I come to you as a concerned citizen, sharing alarming information about our state's voter database uncovered through thousands of hours of research conducted by our highly qualified and credentialed data team. While the numbers are staggering and a lot to digest, one thing is clear: They don't add up. Just like your checkbook must balance, so must our votes. If you had 10,000 fewer dollars in your bank account than you had deposited, you would certainly want to know what happened. And if a company had a significant discrepancy in its books, the company most certainly would want to conduct an audit. In fact, yearly audits are required by law for all public companies. Our audit of the 2022 election using only official data provided by state election officials show that the 2022 elections may not have been accurate or legally compliant. We are not saying one candidate won over another, or that any election should be overturned. The state's official data from a certified election shows that the votes, as counted, were not valid and accurate under law. This morning, we present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of findings that the laws have applied. I've provided a copy to the clerk for each of the commissioners. We are happy to meet with you to go over this information, including more detail about specific findings. If you have questions that I have not answered now, I will commit to getting you the answer in writing from the United Sovereign Americans executive team as soon as possible. This data and our request for an investigation will be shared with state election officials and law enforcement. Today, we come to you, our closest representatives, for support and action. We are asking that you listen to the resolution, ask questions if you have them, and vote promptly for its passage. Your action on this resolution will illustrate your dedication in support of concerns for your constituents, your county, and your country. Yeah, thank you. Our next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speaker will conclude our presentation.
Barbara Walter?
Hello. My name is Barbara Walter. I've lived in Lee County for 10 years, actually 10 years next month. I'm a volunteer, not official spokesperson, with the United Sovereign Americans. Whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections, quote, "and the right of suffrage can be denied by a debasement or dilution of the weight of citizens' vote just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of the franchise," end quote, Reynolds v. Sims 377, U.S. 533, 1964. Whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation, Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law, end quote, in Re. Coy 127, U.S. 731, 1888. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate, as per National Voter Registration Act 1993. Number two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, per U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Number three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. And number four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system, as per Help America Vote Act 2002. Whereas an open-source audit of the Florida 2022 general election conducted by Florida state citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that violate both federal and state laws, including 564,926 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the Florida State Voter Roll Database, 117,171 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations, 88,635 blank ballots, 145,309 more votes counted than voters who voted in the 2022 general election. No one knows who cast them. 205,744 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election in Florida was 62. Certification as defined by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal.
Thank you. Next is Curtis Armstrong.
My name is Curtis Armstrong. I live in Lee County and have been a resident of Florida for six years. I'm also a volunteer and not an official spokesperson for United Sovereigns America. Whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election, accuracy is defined as the ability of the system to capture and report the specific selections and absence of selections made by a voter without error. Whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted, certification of an election that varies from the law is an abridgement of civil rights of the citizens, a fraud. United States versus Thackmorton, '98, U.S. 61, 1878. From time immemorial, an election to public office has been, in point of substance, no more and no less than the expression by qualified electors of their choice of candidates. United States versus Classic, '33, U.S. 299, 1941. Whereas Florida's 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of guaranteed protection of our national rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us. The American people resulting in calculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of the United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the insurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identifying an eligibility to register and vote, not an anonymous attestation. Voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenged 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Hand-marked secure ballots similar to currency where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Systems, machines, system measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Adjudication must be signed off by party candidate and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot imaging, and CRVs. Ballots, regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote, count to final canvas, including audibility and witness transfer with paper records.
Thank you. Adrian Stevens?
Gentlemen, my name is Adrian Stevens. I hail from Fort Myers, Florida. 2006, I was able to escape to my state of birth, the tyrannical state of New Jersey, to become a resident of Florida, where God, country, and family is just not a saying. It's actually a way of life here, and it's reassuring. The question of their election integrity goes to that exact question we're addressing today. I'm a volunteer. I'm not an official spokesperson of the United Sovereign Americans. I'd like to continue the, therefore, resolutions. NIIST compliant, randomization statistically valid, end-to-end audit with a 95% confident level of all elections pursuant to 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, bonded, security, forensic, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, CVRs, ballot count, and qualified voter count, custodial transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. In total, of all the unique variants above is more than 10% of the margin of victory. A new election must be held, to be held in the state for those candidates affected unless those issues can be provably corrected by manual hand recount and a full review of records. Waiver of the requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. We've also included in the resolution a convenient spot for you each to acknowledge, either in favor or not, of this. And more importantly, an appendix of the resolution gives all the source data, information, relative legislation, federal, state, court records, to support why we're asking and the statements we've made in this resolution. Our nation, our country, is in a delicate balance. The trust of our institutions have just been, in my 65 years, never been so low. Election integrity is the reassurance that each American, each Floridian, knows that I may not have won the argument in the public square, but I know that my vote was sincerely protected, and that only those qualified as a citizen of this country and a resident of state may actually say that God-given right. I yield my time to whomever. Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions?
Trace Campenana? Trace? Followed by Chris Quackenbush.
My name is Chris Quackenbush. I've lived in Lee County for 19 years. I'm a volunteer and not an official spokesperson with the United Sovereign Americans. What you heard today is the culmination of thousands of hours of work by our hardly, by our highly qualified and credentialed volunteer data teams from Florida and across the country. Large numbers of Americans, including many right here in Florida, have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. I think we can all agree that we wish that was not the case, but official data shows these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. At the same time, government representatives at all levels have been, have not been transparent or responsive to what our citizen audits have found. Our right to choose our representatives in legally valid and transparent elections is the foundation upon which the constitutional republic was established. The right has been bravely protected over the past two and a half centuries by the sacrifices of our brothers, fathers, mothers, and sisters. You, on this board, have a chance to show everyone who defended American liberty and the citizens you represent, that you value it also by passing this resolution demanding a valid general election in 2024. You just heard a powerfully-written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 elections from registration through certification. In it, you heard us ask for meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the '24 election for all Americans. In fact, the resolution cited many U.S. Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such actions. Laws are being ignored. Our website showcasing our initiatives nationwide has extremely informative videos that explain anomalies and apparent violations of law that are found here in Florida, as well as in other states. The website is uniteforfreedom.com. That's unite, the number for, freedom.com. I encourage you to check it out and learn more about our organization. Thank you very much for your time tonight, and we hope you support this resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Debra Wallace?
Oh, yes, sir. Debra Wallace, I have a concern in this county. I'm a native here of Florida. When it comes to the homeless or people coming out of your institutions, like prisons and jails, y'all lack of having anything for rehabilitation or the homeless. You're doing so much for everything else in this county, but they're leaving out places for people to live, the homeless. Your resource sucks, and I just wanted to voice my opinion on that. I just finished doing, three years ago, I just finished doing 13 years in prison to come out in the pandemic, and I'm just now getting on my feet a little bit from being homeless, shut out from their resource systems, because they are very selective in who they choose, where they want them to stay, who they want to help. This is a prejudiced county, and not prejudiced so much as with race, just prejudiced in general about helping somebody. There is no, no resources in this county that are building for people, like I said, that's coming out of prison or the homeless. I don't see where in this county that it's so much other stuff going on, and you're spending so much money on other things besides showing unity for the people that really need it. That's my opinion today, and that's how I feel. So I was asked by my resource officer to come and voice my opinion, and I have did just that. And I would truly appreciate if y'all take into consideration to look into some of these matters that's going on, instead of just sitting down in your seats. Thank you.
Thank you. David Edmonton. David Edmonton. David. Janine Jane?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Representatives of the Voices for Lee County, Florida Animals Group, met with county manager Dave Harner, assistant county manager Mark Mora, and shelter director Mr. Adorno last week regarding some of our ideas that have improved the lives of animals in other shelters. Our Voices group is very disappointed with the response from Lee County to our shelter reform plan. We have submitted 11 changes we would like to see implemented in our shelter reform plan. Every single one of those 11 changes was rejected or claimed to be already in place. It is obvious they think they are doing their best and are not open to making any significant changes, and that is just not acceptable. The astounding pet overpopulation is everywhere, not just in Lee County. Adoption and fostering are just not enough. Breeding has got to stop. If Lee County needs another veterinarian and more funds for low costs or free spay-neuter, then so be it. Reevaluate their budget. Ordnance number 1404 now repealed, reads, "Whereas the Board of County Commissioners is committed to reducing pet overpopulation through non-lethal humane methods and reducing stray animal control costs to the taxpayers." This statement is omitted from 14-22, the ordinance now in effect. Bring back ordinance 1404 to stop the breeding of dogs and cats by individuals. All domestic dogs and cats over the age of six months must be sterilized. It is not okay to It is not okay to just keep killing feral kittens in hopes that that will solve the problem. It will not. Bring back breeder certificates with fees. Our group is growing. We have over 300 members that are asking for change. Did you know research has shown that for every person that complains, there are approximately 26 people that are unhappy and agree but remain silent? Do the math, 300 times 26, 26 equates to approximately 7,800 taxpayers and voters that are on our side. Regarding the Animal Care Trust Fund, more fundraising events for the trust fund need to be held and advertised. Every veterinary invoice for expenditures from the trust fund should include the shelter animals A number. Many just have the animal's name, so there's no way to verify which animal has been treated. Once again, we are asking that the commissioners reinstate the trust fund oversight committee, which was deleted by you on August 10, 2010. Lee County euthanized 2,482 animals in 2023. The definition of euthanasia from Webster's Dictionary is as follows. "The act or practice of killing or permitting the death of hopelessly sick or injured individuals in a relatively painless way for reasons of mercy. Killing for behavior issues or requested by the owner when the animal is not seriously ill is not euthanasia." Separate totals for animals killed and animals euthanized should be listed on the kennel statistics report. Remember, we are not giving up. We are not going away until no adoptable animal is killed in Lee County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me speak. This is a topic of deep importance to each of us who advocates for animals' well-being and safety. The Lee County Domestic Animal Services provides a vital role in assuring that animals in Lee County have shelter from storms of life, so to speak. This role comes with enormous responsibilities as animals enter this facility during a time of crisis in their lives, as their sense of well-being has been completely shattered. The animal advocacy community seeks to be an integral part in obtaining safety for these precious beings. Animal rescues are a vital source of support that enables animals to find a safe return to the community. Rescues depend on the public, as does Lee County Domestic Animal Services, through volunteerism in order to support the process from crises to stabilization. Truthful transparency and trust between the shelter system and the public is paramount in order to accomplish these goals. We are lacking in that area right now. When there's a breakdown in communication and trust, remedies need to be explored and implemented in order to regain functionality between the shelter system and the community, which are your Lee County taxpayers. Recently, several animal advocates were involved in attempting to secure the safety of seven four-week-old kittens that Lee County Domestic Animal Services slated needed to be completed by 4:00 p.m. on April 30, as the staff of Lee County Domestic Animal Services was unable to attend to their needs. Those of us that were involved in one level or another thought that the mission was accomplished because they said that they would be there to be taken, only to find that there was a very serious breakdown in transparency and communication which resulted in the kittens being euthanized that night, even though that we were assured that they would be safe, even though we had people that were coming to pick up the animals. This is an example of the breakdown between Lee County Domestic Animal Services staff and the community that has had a tragically negative outcome. These kinds of issues need resolution through honest self-reflection, transparency, and honest communication. The establishment of the Citizens Advisory Board will enable both the Lee County Domestic Animal Services and the community to be able to enhance communication and cooperation in order to ensure that safe placement in the community is achieved. In addition to requiring that staff take the free classes that are available to them, that is also paramount, so that the assessments that they do will come from a proven source that works rather than a personal opinion. Having behavioral analysts in the oversight position is also vital. If a young child needs immediate medical attention, we wouldn't seek treatment from a veterinary service. Similarly, animals in crisis need trained behavior analysis to assist in acquiring positive outcomes. Thank you once again for your attention to this matter. We are not going away. We are staying until their voices are heard, until no adoptable animal in Lee County is euthanized for some ridiculous reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori? Lori doesn't have a last name?
I'm going to yield my time to Jo from Save Our Strays on Fort Myers Beach.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jo Noblock. I'm the founder and owner of Save Our Strays Feline Rescue on Fort Myers Beach. I'm here this morning to report recent unethical activities at Lee County Domestic Animal Services. Last Tuesday, April 30, at 2:00 p.m., it was published that Lee County DAS had seven four-week-old kittens that they were asking rescues to pull or they would be euthanized at 4:00 p.m. They were informed that I was on my way to pick up these kittens. I was approaching the shelter at 10:00 to 4:00. I received a phone call from a rescue that Lee County said that, "No, we are not giving them to her," as she is banned from Lee County DAS. A foster was in transit and planning to be there by 5:00 p.m., but was 15 minutes late due to traffic. She even called and let them know she would be late. When she arrived, the men at the front desk said they were no longer available. They euthanized these seven kittens for no reason, when my rescue plus a foster was willing to take them. Beth, the kennel supervisor, apparently was the one that was handling this situation, and all others involved with this senseless euthanization need to be fired immediately. If this wasn't bad enough, I was called by Brandon at Lee County Domestic Animal Services in October after the hurricane, telling me that they wanted all cats removed from the beach as it was too destructive. I told him the cats that survived the hurricane were to remain on the beach, not taken and euthanized. Unfortunately, they had officers trapping and taking our cats to the shelter and euthanizing them. I asked the officers that had been trapping at the beach what she did with the TNR cats she trapped. She tried to, on her commuter called, on computer, call them up, but they were already euthanized, which they had no business doing. I called and asked about a particular black cat they took from Mango Street. Melissa, who took the call, said the cat was stressed and humanely euthanized, and it should have never been taken there as it was a TNR cat and had tipped deer, as all others did. The TNR cat that has been used to living outside for years would not, of course, be, would always be stressed in a cage. Recently, we have had several beach cats disappear and wondering if they are at it again, killing innocent cats. No one has told me why I am banned from Lee County, but it is most likely because I am the whistleblower who called downtown and told the office of Cecil Pendergrass what they were doing and that they were trapping our cats, and we wanted it stopped, as the cats needed to remain on the beach, as we lost many of them, hundreds of them, in the hurricane, as well as people. My husband died. Ten of my rescue cats died. I was in water up to my shoulders. So I have been through hell and back. So anyway, this is a bad situation that needs to stop.
Thank you. Linda Schelmer? Linda Schelmer?
Good morning. Could I give you guys just this picture to kind of pass around?
You can give it to the clerk.
Okay, thank you. So I'm here this morning. My name is Linda Schelmer. I'm here to talk briefly about our animal registry, abuse registry that was put in place this past, I believe it was December. Although because of the lack of ordinances that support this, that should support this and required to implement successfully, it really renders it purely recreational at this point, and it's an important registry. I mean, it's there for what it is, to prevent people from further severely abusing animals. So in 2014, as I'm sure you're all aware, there was an ordinance put in place, 1404, which a significant portion of that had to do with breeder registration, which is what's necessary to really have a check and balance in making sure this registry is being used appropriately. And I, I'm a registered nurse. I buy my licensure. I am required to be licensed and registered for that reason, to keep me up on ordinances, making sure I'm doing my education, et cetera. So in order to have the breeder registry, that would make sense to match up with our animal abuse registry, to be able to check on people. So most recently, the picture that I have here, a small little nine-month-old puppy was found hiding behind somebody's house. It was discovered that he had a two-month-old break of his leg that was ignored by his owner. He nearly lost his leg to amputation. Thank goodness for a great veterinary surgeon saved it. The breeder that had sold this dog refuses, aware of what happened, and refuses to report or give the name of the person she sold it to, to hold them responsible for abandoning this animal, dragging his leg on the street. People like that would also become affected by the breeder's registry and perhaps wouldn't be breeding and doing this to animals. So what I did on my own was I called, I randomly called five or six so-called reputable breeders, asked them about our registry. They had no idea what it was. I called two of our major pet supply stores. Neither of them acknowledged knowing. In fact, one said that her boss would never allow them to refuse a sale of an animal. And based on our registry right now, it's required that they check it. So it's a little disturbing how it, but it's not being checked. And the only way, though, to do that is to reinstate 1404, at least being a major portion of that is the breeder responsibility. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah McDonald? Deborah McDonald?
Good morning. My name is Deborah McDonald, and I'm here as a voice for the Lee County Animals. Since last month, it appears things are going south as far as our request to work together in harmony with the county shelter. In spite of our attempts to sit down together and discuss our solutions and problems, it appears the shelter staff are unwilling to work to make any changes. Last week, the killing of seven four-week-old kittens, in spite of rescues on the way, is a slap in the face to the Lee County citizens seeking to reduce the killing at the shelter. It's fiascos like this that are, where I believe reviving the Citizens Advisory Committee would be beneficial. Obviously, the shelter is not prepared for kitten season. If they were, they would have had a trained kitten caretaker on hand. The rescue plea went out at, I believe, 1:50 p.m., and rescues and fosters were scrambling to figure out how to rescue by 4:00 p.m. That's not a lot of time. Many people work and don't have that transportation. I was personally affected by the killing of these seven kittens as I started searching for a foster to split the litter up to help me caretake, and I was looking for a rescue that was going to haul the kittens. After seeing those things, I started, after securing those things, I started calling the shelter, as I'm not on the rescue email list. I was trying to get through over for 30 minutes. Finally, at 3:30, I just jumped in my car and started driving there. I did not, I did finally reach someone who said the department was already locked up, and there's no way I would get in. But she assured me the kittens were safe for the night. Obviously, she had no clue. I found out the next day the shelter had killed the seven of the four-week-old kittens because they had no, no one on staff to bottle-feed them overnight. I also found out there were two other rescues on the way. The rescues left the staff, let the staff know that they were going to be late and not get there until 5:30, but the kittens were killed at 5:15. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Barbara Riera? Barbara?
I'm Joanne Hunter. Hello, I'm also with Voices for the Animals, and the reason that I'm here today is I think we need to upgrade our whole system that we have, as taxpayers were concerned that what's happening there is not good. Gandhi once said, "The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way the animals are treated." From my current analysis, Lee County must do better by the animals. LCDAS, Lee County Domestic Animal Services, is entrusted by the public for our animals' care. From personal experience, we have a euthanasia rate 20% higher than U.S. norms. We need more qualified, certified behaviorists to make live-or-die decisions. The dogs are being sentenced to death because they tried to bite a leash or because they were scared when a fake, a fake hand got stuck in the cage. They trade, they train the German Shepherds with this big scary hand that they shove and make them bite. It's called a bite arm. Well, that's what they're shoving in these cages. These animals are put in a metal cage, and they shove something in there and decide whether they're going to live or die. That doesn't make any sense. It really doesn't. And I had personal experience where I had to fight for a dog. I did the right thing. I turned an animal into LC, the Lee County Domestic Animal Services. I told them I wanted to adopt them. I already knew him. It was a neighborhood dog, but the person just kept letting him out. And then I had to fight for the dog to get him back. They said he was not, they couldn't trust, Lee County couldn't trust the dog, and I asked why. I asked five times why. They said because he rolled over and showed his belly when they were putting him in the bin with the other dogs. That's not aggressive. It's not passive-aggressive. It's not, it's not, that shouldn't be a live-or-die decision for a dog. Anyhow, I did, I did fight to get the animal back. More adoption outreach needs to happen. We, as a rescue community, are ready and willing to support this. Public opinion of LCDAS is very low, and this can only be changed by LCDAS earning back the public's trust. And we are willing to work with them to do this, but they don't seem to be willing to work with us. That's why we're here. A solution to reinstate the Oversight Board, and why was this? Do you know that the Oversight Board was dissolved because somebody put a piece of paper in front of somebody to sign? And the Oversight Board needs to be there to make sure that the facility is running properly, that they have proper care of the animals, and because this is a public service, they're not actually allowed by law to deny a rescue, to take an animal unless there's a reason behind it that they can't.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Barbara Riera?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Barbara Riera. I'm here to support Voices for Lee County, Florida Animals. I'm new to the area and have become aware of policies implemented by Lee County DAS regarding euthanasia, which I greatly oppose and consider to be totally irrational. regarding euthanasia, which I greatly oppose and consider it to be totally irrational. For example, 0% hold on cats. Many of us are cat owners and love our cats. Cats, we, we keep them inside. They're indoor cats. We don't put a chip on them. Yet, you know, any kid, my kid can open the door, and there goes the cat. And they run away. They run. So for, you know, for the shelter to come in and find the cat and get the cat and euthanize it without giving the owners the opportunity, at least, you know, a couple of days of hold for us to search for the cat or, you know, be able to get to the shelter, you know, to get our companions back, that, you know, that just, just says a lot. I moved here from Day County, where there's a large population of homeless domesticated animals. Yet, Day County Animal Services managed to make their shelter a no-kill shelter. Maybe Lee County DAS can get some recommendations and guidance from successful no-kill shelters to find a solution to end this horrific act of euthanasia of defenseless animals in our That's what I have to say for now. So thank you all for hearing our concerns.
Thank you. William Joe Schottmiller. Followed by Marcia Ellis.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to advocate, as always, for housing. I know with the city council meeting, they have some places up for sale. Unfortunately, they tore down a building that could have been used for, like, a hostel setting. Also here to get some direction. I purchased with the help, with a few other people, a residence in Suncoast, right near the community center that I, the yard really needs cleaned up. So I need to be directed to get the garbage containers, what, who I would see to get them delivered out there, so I can go out there and clean up the yard, clean up the garage area, the mobile home area, that kind of thing. So that's what I'd need direction in. There'll be a add-on for the community center. I've been seeing Charlie. They had a yard sale. They probably raised money for the foundation of the community center. Also, yesterday, a friend of mine, and Cecil used to babysit their daughter. She gave me this thing she picked up at Costco, and she said, "This would be, because of the rainy weather, a good thing to," it's called a camping blanket. It's been around forever, I guess. And she bought three of them, and I got a couple other people, and I came into town last night, that got a Costco cart, so they're going to buy some. And it's a weatherproof blanket that you can carry. I mean, we've passed that. I don't know how many blankets that they lose, or they get rotted, or that. This is a good thing, so. So I need some direction, who to contact to get those delivered out there, because I'm going to be out there working and that, so. And the need for housing, or any buildings that the county might own, or properties that could be rehab, please let us know, me or anybody else that's an advocate. Also, another advocate mentioned that about tent cities, he was, he had some experience in. He would need to know who to see, so if there's anything the county is, because there is no homeless after October, I believe, so we all need to work together to come up with solutions. And this will protect them a little bit, but we need shelter. I thank you for your time. God bless.
Marcia Ellis.
It's okay. Marcia Ellis, for the record. Today, I'm speaking about the, an organization, PIER, which is Public Employees for Environmental Responsibility. I became aware of PIER's work in reviewing a petition that they had co-authored with Energy Justice related to Right to Know and Emergency Planning for Incineration or Solid Waste Management. I have also been following the work they've been doing in Texas regarding PFIS, where there was widespread environmental contamination from the spreading of bio solids, leading to animal kill, die-offs. So the reason I'm bringing this up is because this organization, PIER, is an organization made up of environmental, public health professionals, land managers, scientists, enforcement officers, civil servants, and others that believe in upholding environmental laws and values, and they work with current and former employees to this end. In their work, they have identified a trend in the Florida Department of Environmental Protection related to enforcement. So basically, when we take a look at the amount of enforcement actions, we are 50% below what they were in the '80s, the '90s, up to 2010. And this is alarming. When we look at the number of notices of violations, again, we saw, we're seeing declines. Why does this matter? Well, I'm personally following about six pollution incidences that are ongoing, unresolved in this community, as well as widespread violations protecting, or failing to protect the gopher tortoises out in the eastern part of the county, up to three, four, five violations a week. Some of the violations that this particular report goes into have to deal with domestic wastewater, which is our sanitary sewage overflows. In 2010, there were eight, over 1,800 actions. Today, it's about half, at 550. So there were 175 enforcement actions related to domestic wastewater. In 2010, there were just 82 last year. And we know that we have more and more and more of these municipal waste facilities and fewer and fewer and fewer enforcement actions. So if we look, we have a graph that does a good job of explaining this trend. When we take a look at the way that the cases are resolved, there's also an alarming trend that has to do with investments that take place, or what are called in-kind pollution projects.
Thank you for your comment. Any other people would like to speak in public comment? Come on up, ma'am.
You got two.
Hello. My name is David Edmondson. I wear cochlear implants. I'm deaf. But because of cochlear implants, I'm able to hear. There's a lot of buildings in town. You can go to Sarasota, and you can walk in, and I can hit a little button on these things, and I can go right into the sound system of every public building, every theater, every school. I go to the airport and hear the announcements over the, and I'm sitting back there on that back row, and I hardly hear, understood anything you guys said today. We, we build buildings with codes to allow for the handicapped to be able to get into wheelchairs and stuff. We just seem to overlook those of us who can't hear. You do put some signs up, and I appreciate that, but there's a simple technology called tele, telecall. It's a little telephone wire that you can run around, and you can be able to hear and pick up the sound system. You have to put a receiver on your sound system. You go to McGregor Baptist Church, they have that technology. That's the only place that I'm aware of that has that in Fort Myers. There's not even nonprofit agencies like Hearing Loss Association of America, chapters, which I'm going to try to initiate one here in Fort Myers, where people can go that have questions about what technology is available that allow them to hear. I happen to be lucky enough to become the vice president of technology at TCU in Fort Worth, Texas. And because of that, I was able to understand and manage 135 people and talk to, talk in busy applications like this because of the technology available. And I think y'all will need to look at a building, some, consider in building codes for the, for those of us who have hearing loss. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Joyce Campana. I'm not sure if you called me before or not. I did not hear real well. Sorry about that. I am here, again, to discuss the FEMA discount. We are approximately one month away from hurricane season, I believe. How time flies. I did notice the website, on the county website regarding FEMA. What I did not notice was, two things. It seems that we're partway through the extension that was granted, but I don't know if we are partway through or more with the progress we need to make to submit everything to FEMA. I was looking for a little graph or map or chart showing, you know, we're 50% through the giving campaign, or the campaign of pain, giving the statistics to FEMA, but I was unable to find that. Also, I was wondering, with the new hurricane season coming upon us, I'd like to explore or have the county emergency department explore the use of drones more. I know the police department uses them extensively, but I bet there's a lot that could be done if you go through neighborhoods with a drone, and there was a house before, and there's no house now. That's over 50% destroyed. That might help if we have another catastrophe further down the line in dealing with FEMA. Just a suggestion of something to look into. Also, I think that an issue of this importance, even though it has gotten a area on the website, really needs to be on this agenda until the deadline for the extension is met, and then a final update on the progress that has been made and the determination. And I was very disappointed to see that that was all pushed off onto a website. A lot of people don't have access and can't read, you know, off their phone, all of that information either. And I think that we should not lose sight of this as a county and as a group of citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public would like to speak?
Chairman? If we could, the whole comment is gone, I was going to ask staff something real quick.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's more, more comments? Sorry.
Good morning. Marcia Fernandez, I think you called my name, but it got, kind of got, somebody else jumped in that had been called also. As you may remember, and I'm here representing Voices for Lee County and Haven-on-Earth Animal League, and as you may remember, our organization, Voices for Lee County, Florida Animals, was in attendance at the last Commissioners' meeting on April 16th. At that meeting, we voiced our concerns over the operational policies of Lee County Domestic Animal Services. We tried to bring to your attention what we feel would be small but very significant changes that would improve the lives of animals entering the facility. Since that meeting, we had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Herner, Mr. Mora, and Mr. Adorno. While we didn't agree on everything, we did agree on some issues. Hopefully, we will be able to work to bring to fruition a low-cost spay neuter clinic available to all Lee County residents. We are also hoping to increase the number of rescues that actively pull animals from LCDAS. On the areas we did not agree upon, one is their euthanasia policy. We feel in regard to dogs, LCDAS has established standards that are incredibly difficult and at times impossible for scared or stressed dogs to meet, resulting in their euthanasia. I have three dogs, and I can pretty much guarantee you that two of them would never pass your evaluation. In the case of a scared or stressed dog, why not evaluate them in a setting off-site or a room that is made to look more like the home that they have had, so they wouldn't be as stressed out? We also feel that the three-day hold period, including holidays and weekends, is not enough time for owners to find their missing or lost dogs. At a minimum, there should be five days, not including holidays and weekends. For cats, there is a zero stray hold policy. That means cats without a microchip can be euthanized immediately upon intake, they can be transferred to another county for adoption, or put on the adoption floor immediately. Why not give the owners the same days to find their cats, or even three days? Many people believe their cat is an indoor cat and won't ever get out, and they haven't had it microchipped. Then, because it isn't chipped, there's a distinct possibility that the indoor cat's family will never see it again. Voices for Lee County Animals will continue to meet with our officials to find out what we need to do to get this policy changed and do it. We know many groups have come before us in an effort to get changes made. We're not sure what happened or where they went, but we want to assure you that we're not going away. We're going to work with our county to get things changed for the animals. We will see you on the first and third Tuesday of each month. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. There's no other items before.
Detective, please. I just wanted to respond. We had some conversation about the elections. I think we all really hold our elections very highly in our, in our jobs, and I think it's the most important thing in front of our community. But I asked for the county attorney, based upon the information we received prior to the meeting, too. That's something, I have talked to some of the members before the assembly from that we have no oversight of our state and federal laws. If you could tell us, the county attorney, what we can and cannot do is related to, may support it 100%, but what are like limits based upon our authority as the board of county commissioners when it comes to state and federal law, voting registrations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Please.
In Florida, by and large, the conduct of elections is governed by Chapter 97 of the Florida statutes, specifically Section 97.041 sets forth the qualifications to vote. That is set forth as a matter of state law. Interestingly also, in Section 97.0115, local governments are preempted in the area of regulating elections. The preemption runs in favor of the state, so with due respect to the speakers and this board of county commissioners, you have no regulatory authority whatsoever over the conduct of elections in the state of Florida. That is preempted to the state and the state constitutional officers, as well as the local constitutional officers, such as the supervisor of elections, who is likewise governed by state law and would not be affected by any ordinance or resolution adopted by this board.
So their next step would actually be contacting a state representative or senator to sponsor a bill to improve the laws overseeing that, correct?
Yes, sir. That would be the governing body with regulatory authority over elections in the state.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pendergrass, thank you for bringing that forward. That's, that's, long story short, from what he said, basically, we were being asked to do something that we don't have the authority to do, something that we actually may support. I mean, I think one of the beautiful things about becoming an American citizen, or being an American citizen, being born one, is you get that beautiful right to vote, right? And we know that non-citizens are not allowed to vote, and so all of us want to make sure that the elections are conducted with integrity and appropriately, but you can't come to the commission and ask us to do something that we don't have the power and the ability to do. But I do appreciate and encourage the folks to reach out to their elected representatives, the state senators and state representatives, who can change that law to work on that. So thanks. Thanks for bringing that up.
Mr. Chairman, may I have 12 seconds?
No. Sorry, public comments already have been closed. You can talk to us right after it. Any other issue? I'll call a meeting adjourned. Come on up.